I'd like to call to order the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 15, 2023. Roll call?
Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell. Montgomery is absent.
Okay, a stand for pleasantries.
To allegiance, tune the flame out of the United States of America. Like we're British, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, right? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move. Second.
I would like to add two things to the agenda.
Okay.
So it'd be under council business D, Cannon Falls Fair Board, copies of titles, et cetera, to the Fair Board, and then A, B, C, D, E, would be Cannon Falls Fair Board, 2022, 2023 donations to be paid.
Okay, any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of D and E?
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi and second by Groot. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. This public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they will be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are subject to a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule a consideration of the item on a future agenda. Jason Failing.
Evening. May I approach the council so I can pass down? I'm here to read a letter here, what I've given for you, and I'd ask that the letter be put into the minutes for the meeting this evening. It's the Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association and Cannon Falls Township Fire Service Agreement Concerns. Having worked through four prior service agreements, the process for the latest agreement differed greatly. Initially, it seemed as though the city's position was to force the townships to pay a considerable amount more than had been paid in the past without any notice or justification given. We worked through information exchanges with Administrator Jensen, who seemed to be combative and didn't seem to understand how the fire service agreement worked. We met with some city council members to discuss the agreement and found that members we spoke to didn't seem to understand how the association agreements work, and some didn't seem to fully support Administrator Jensen's approach. We attended two finance committee meetings. At the first meeting, Administrator Jensen made several emotionally charged statements. One of the statements was calling the offer the Fire Association and Cannon Falls Townships made ridiculous. At the second finance committee meeting, the offer the Association and Cannon Falls Township offered was unanimously accepted. At the subsequent city council meeting, the offer initially made was unanimously accepted. A five-year agreement with a 4% increase, the only change to be made to the prior service agreement, and an agreement to investigate alternative methods to figure out how much the townships contribute. Because the entire process was unlike the past three agreements, we requested meeting minutes of finance committee meetings and city council meetings to try to figure out what was going on. We were repeatedly stonewalled by Administrator Jensen. After waiting months, we stopped at the city hall, filled out a data request form to inspect meeting minutes, and were not allowed to view them, which to our knowledge is a violation of data practice laws. As we were told, we were told we would have to wait 10 days before we would be allowed to inspect meeting minutes. Also, we were told we had to pay 25 cents for each page we wanted a copy of. To my surprise, the meeting minutes contained nothing on any finance committee recommendations to the city council or on any discussions the city council had to act on demanding more money from the townships. They contained no information that was presented to the Association Cannon Falls Township or by the Association Cannon Falls Township Finance Committee or city council members from any finance committee meetings. They only spoke of Administrator Jensen's thoughts, and worst of all, they contained statements that are not true. Meeting minutes in question are attached. 9/28/22 Finance Committee meeting, the Minute State Melhouse quote floated the idea of a 40-60 split. Regan did not make this suggestion. On 2/13/23, the Finance Committee meeting, the meeting minute state failing in auto did not have a basis for the increase other than it just felt right. The information initially presented by Administrator Jensen to the Association and Cannon Falls Township was the basis for our offers. For 10/23 Finance Committee meeting, the Minute State, the Cannon Falls Township and Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association agreed to immediately negotiate fair and equitable terms for the next contract on a monthly basis and start billing for every fire call. The only agreement made by the Association and Cannon Falls Township was to look at how the agreement is assessed. Both the Association and Cannon Falls Township told the committee to start billing for calls, as has been in the past four agreements, but the city decided not to do so. It was pointed out that a substantial amount of money had been lost by the city by not billing for calls under the past agreement, and billing for calls would help alleviate budget shortfalls. To my next page. We're not here to dwell on the issues mentioned. The issues mentioned are only some of the issues we experienced, which from the perspective of the Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association and Cannon Falls Township plainly show the city did not enter talks in good faith. As a result, we are here to set the record straight and make sure it is fully understood by the city how we are moving forward with any future discussions. The Cannon Falls Fire Department belongs to the City of Cannon Falls, which means the city needs to figure out how to handle budget issues. The townships will not be dragged into budget issues as they are solely the responsibility of the city. The fire service agreements are not binding contracts forcing the townships to work with the City of Cannon Falls. They are merely agreements of an amount to be paid for services for a specified time. There is nothing obligating the townships to continue with new agreements. The townships have many offers or options for fire service. Surrounding fire departments are regularly courting townships to shift sections to them for service because they understand what serving a larger population does for them. Example, the fireman's pensions. The townships are free to decide which fire department they'd like to officially assign sections to, as we had tried to explain to the Finance Committee and Administrator Jensen. Hampton Township almost left the association because of how the recent service agreement talks went. The impact to the Cannon Falls Fire Department from Hampton Township leaving would not have only been felt by a decrease in the payments from the state aid association. In addition, it would have also been felt by losing a pull tab booth at Dan's Bar to the Hampton Fire Department. The pull tab booth has been generating a significant amount of revenue for the fire department. Minnesota Statute 36.15 or 365.15 clearly states it is the citizens of the township who decide how much is levied for fire service. The attorneys from the Minnesota Association of Townships have provided an interpretation that the township's citizens may or may not decide to levy for fire service. In conclusion, when the city approaches the townships for any further discussions, we will have this information at the table, and we fully expect talks to return to a respectful exchange as they had been for past agreements. We fully expect to be dealing with an administrator who provides and explains information instead of arguing whether information asked for is relevant and does not refer to reasonable offers by the townships that are based off information provided as ridiculous, as well as make claims that offers made are baseless and just feel right to the Association and Cannon Falls Township. We fully expect the city council to understand the townships are not contractually obligated to enter into new fire service agreements with Cannon Falls and may move sections as well as entire townships to other fire departments at any time. We fully expect the city council to understand that the growth of Cannon Falls increases the requirements for emergency service, and the townships are not responsible for costs related to the expansion of the fire department due to the growth the city solely decides to embrace. Refer to the city's recent ISO audit, which Chief Altov spoke about at our last meeting. According to current codes and standards, development and expansions, such as the apartments being built at the Cannon Falls site, dictate that cities invest in more equipment. For example, fire station number two to handle additional equipment and staff for serving a larger city, more water towers to maintain adequate water pressure for firefighting capabilities serving a larger city, and specialized equipment such as a ladder truck to serve larger buildings. We expect to return to the precedent that has been set for the past 20 years, a return to the understanding that Cannon Falls Fire Department belongs to the City of Cannon Falls and the townships are not responsible for budget issues. Example, associated costs due to development or any specialized equipment purchased to benefit the City of Cannon Falls. A cordial exchange when discussing agreements, and to have adequate warning of any possible drastic price increases caused by the sudden abandonment of 20 years of precedent, which we thankfully averted, that would have created substantial property tax levies to the citizens of Cannon Falls Township, Randolph Township, Hampton Township, Stanton Township, Douglas Township, Leon Township, Vesa Township, and Warsaw Township. In return, the townships will continue to contribute a fair amount for the great service Cannon Falls Fire and Rescue provides. And that attached is Minnesota Statute 365.15 and an interpretation of that statute from the Association of Township's attorney. And the letter's been signed by me, the Chair of the Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association, Regan Melhouse of the Cannon Valley Rural Fire Association. He's the secretary, and Ray Otto, Cannon Falls Township Supervisor. And Regan and Ray were not able to get here tonight. Thank you. That is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ogorman.
Well, I think it says babe, but.
Good, thank you. Good evening. The only reason I'm here is, Lisa, you brought up about the data requests and what it cost the city. And the data request was in conjunction with Project Tulip. And I'm really confused because I did call you and ask you if you knew about it, and you said no. I came to the council meeting and inquired. Nobody said a word. I made it clear that I would initiate a data request if need be, and nobody said anything, so I did. What behooves me is that I got back some public information about Project Tulip. Not all of it, and I may challenge the request because I didn't get all of the public information. I didn't get the engineers' bill. I have yet to see any minutes that refer to project tulip. I have yet to see any agendas where it was listed, so all I can come up with is somebody here is making decisions besides the city council. And that's kind of confusing. Now, how is it that I have public information after I make an expensive request, and some, if not all of you people, don't know what I'm talking about? And you don't know anything about it, yet you have authorized a bill from the city engineer, and you don't know what for? And you probably don't know that there's been contact with somebody in Randolph Township about purchasing property and expanding your industrial park? It's just some things that you guys should probably know. And why is it I can get public information and you, as council members, can't? It's awfully confusing for me.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes, thank you, that closes public input. Moving on to public hearing. Do you want to start this out? Or do I, do you explain it first and then open it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a public hearing for Sandstone Ridge property. You know, that's the property up by the water tower, not by the water, across the street from the water tower. It was the development that was given back to us by SEMCRA for a dollar. Leon Endress and his team is requesting to purchase it. You've seen this at the previous council meeting. You preliminary approved the purchase agreement. They were at the Planning Commission with their development last night, which includes this. We statutorily have to hold a public hearing for the sale of the property, and that's why we're doing this. It went through Planning Commission and was approved last night. The park board looked at it. But statutorily, we have to hold a public hearing to sell city land, and that's what we're doing tonight. So like I said, you preliminary looked at the purchase agreement and approved it, but now we're going to move forward with the public hearing and final approval.
Okay, so with that, I'll open it up to public, well, not public input, but public hearing. So if anybody would like to come forward and talk and make their opinion and thoughts known. So second option for public input. And third and final. So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll look for a motion to proceed with the purchase agreement and closing of the old Sandstone Ridge property to Endress, Cannon Falls.
So moved.
Second.
So first by, our motion by Diane, and second by Jepson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So next, we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. A, just and correct claims, accounting period ending August 10, 2023. B, meeting minutes for August 1, 2023 city council work session. Item C, meeting minutes for August 1, 2023 city council meeting. D, approve digester decant valves purchase. E, approve hire of Jay Helgren for maintenance operator two. F, second reading and adoption of ordinance 394, an ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, to amend the Cannon Falls zoning ordinance by amending a zoning district. And G, approve 3.2% off-sale liquor license for Family Dollar. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Okay, with that, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Approved by?
That was so moved. My big girl voice, sorry.
Second?
Second.
Second by Diane. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to council business. First, we have item A, Towering Bluffs Development Agreement.
So this is the last time you will see Towering Bluffs. It's a development agreement that guides the development. Some of the things that are in there, it spells out the fees that are associated with his first edition, the park land donation that he's going to do, the letter of credit that he's going to provide us, how much inspection services for our engineering firm is going to cost. All these things are in the developer's agreement, indemnifying us as a, as a city. He's got to carry an insurance policy on us with us being additionally insured. And Greg Jablonsky did call me this afternoon, and he said that he is okay with everything that's in the developer's agreement, and he's ready to go. Before we get signatures on that, we'll need a survey of the park land to attach to the, and record. He's got to do the recording. And one other item was a site plan from Xcel Energy for streetlights. Other than that, everything's all done with Towering Bluffs first edition. But we'll, when he brings in the recorded document, we'll, we'll get the mayor to sign up the developer's agreement and the, and the Xcel plan.
Hey, any questions or discussion? With that, I'll take a motion to approve.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Diane, a second by Gesmi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I didn't have my microphone on for that, so hopefully they heard me. Okay, item B, Hardwood Estates. Got a couple of items here, Ms. Laura.
I do. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. It is on, I'm just not talking into it quite yet. Last night, we did present this to the Planning Commission, which is the Hardwood Estates preliminary plat. We did ask for a rezone of the current property from an R2, which is a single-family residential, to an R3. And that would be due to the fact that it is, we're seeking to do some single-family lots as well as some dual-family, some twin-home type lots on this property. And then also do a PUD development as well, because there are a few of the twin-home lots that actually are just going to be slightly smaller than what are typically set in the R3 guide, where it says that they should be 120, 120 feet wide, where they're going to be like about 110 or 112 versus 120 feet. And I did have in the narrative, I did actually say that some of the single-family lots might not meet the minimum lot width of 60 feet. And actually, Diane, since we did discuss this last night, I did double-check, and with the setbacks for the lots, it actually, they will be 65 to 75. So they will meet that minimum lot requirement of 60. So we can strike that second bullet point, actually. But anyway, so I just wanted to go through a couple of slides with you. But what we would be looking for this evening, we did get a recommendation from Planning Commission last night to proceed with the pre-plat, so we would be looking for your approvals again this evening with Resolution 2694. But I wanted to go through what the preliminary plat looks like, just so you have an idea of what we're, what we're looking at, at developing, what the first phase would look like for this particular project, what the different phases look like, and then I'd hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have regarding it. So WHKS, Bill Angerman has been our coach and our lead on this, and then Jesse Preston has been the person, has been the other team. And then Jesse Preston has been the person, has been the other team member from WHKS who's been working with the concept plan and the preliminary plat with us. So according to our comp plan, I just wanted to, is this not working? What's going on? Is there anyone back there?
Matt's not doing his job.
Well, I'll just talk until they get it up on the screen. Anyway, so according to our comp plan, which is almost 20 years old, we're flirting with 20 years old almost. Anyway, the Hardwood Estates. Thank you, Sam. It does show that the area that I have circled here in red is, is the parcel for Hardwood Estates, and that was actually identified back in 2005 as one of the areas that was a priority area for development and expansion in Cannon Falls at the time. So we're right on track with that, I guess, we're just 20 years late. Anyway, so what I do also want to point out is that this project is able to accommodate the infrastructure that the city has in place. It won't compromise that, it won't push it to its limit or tipping point. It won't overburden it. As far as the first phase that we're going to be talking about, it also will be able, there won't be a need for any extra roads to be added at this point. Coming in on 72nd Avenue off of 19, we'll be able to accommodate this first phase in the 29 lots. And the other thing is that it also does conform to the current land use per the comp plan as well. Going forward into the next phases, which again, will all be determined by the pace at which these lots sell and develop, will require extra roadways that would then lead out toward the new 24. So the development plan, this is it in a snapshot here. The pink lots are going to be the single-family lots. The orange lots are going to be the twin-home lots. And again, we're looking at the slab-on-grade type homes. And Phase 1 is going to be over here on the left-hand side. And you'll see that it'll come, this is the existing 72nd Avenue way. So this is the final house that's, that kind of is where 72nd Avenue way ends at the moment. And we would continue down that, that stretch and then hook off to the west and have a cul-de-sac. And then it would dead-end here, only for, with the intent for future development way after my retirement. Hopefully, I get to retire someday. Anyway, so it would incorporate finishing out this row of houses and then finishing out the intersection here with the, with the corners, and then looping around again with this cul-de-sac here. So the first phase will be 29 lots, which would include 10 townhomes and 10, or 19 single-family. Phase 2 would be 25 lots, Phase 3, 25 lots, Phase 4, 26 lots. And then that would also include the park area, which would be in the northeast corner of the development. And, you know, the intent, obviously, we don't have any, you know, vegetation or any landscaping or anything in here, but you know, hopefully, the intent would then to have like trees that would kind of be a natural type of fencing landscaping around this area that would kind of protect it and give it that natural barrier. And then we also did, I zeroed in on this, the shot, just so you could see the development as close as possible, but when we were working with Jesse from WHKS, we did want to make sure that he was incorporating the, the graded trail that they did create on County 24. Even though they haven't paved it, they did grade that. So it is just a grassy walking trail right now. But we did want to make sure that that was incorporated into the plan, so it would come into the development as well. So that would be coming down into the area. If this is 24 right here, the grassy trail would be coming and be incorporated into this area as well. So we wanted to make sure that that was part of the plan, too. But the active park area would be 2.5 acres, which is slightly less than the, the four acres that would be required for this particular development. However, the ordinance does state that you can do a mix of land and cash, a mix of that. So that's what the EDA will most likely do in this particular development, and the park board was supportive of that. So we met with them a few weeks ago. So again, this is just kind of an overview of what our first phase would look like. This isn't necessarily going to be Mill Street East, because that's really going to be confusing if we're hopping over sections. But we just had to put something down in, in the case of just getting this drafted. But, so this is the overall kind of look of it. And then, again, this is the, more zeroed-in look of what Phase 1 would look like. But what I also wanted to show you, which again, is going to be kind of tough to see, but this particular area, this particular parcel, has a lot of rock and soil. So as our previous zoning admin would say, it's a lot like a marble cake, as far as the soil and rock goes. So taking that into account and consideration, working with the topography, we want to try to reduce as much blasting and excavating as possible. So there will be a mix of different types of units with this particular development. So there might be some walkouts, there might be some ramblers, there might be some that will have basements, some will be slab-on-grade. So we want to try to make sure that it's, you know, that we're, again, reducing as much, what's the word I'm looking for, Bill? Give me a word. Give me a word, Bill. As much disruption to the soil or excavation that we need to do. It'll also reduce costs as well. So thank you, Bill, for the thumbs up. But anyway, but also, going back to the comp plan as well, it's also going to be able to provide a lot of mixed-use housing that our community needs as well. So, you know, so you imagine, you know, we want to make this development as affordable as possible, and you know, being that it's right across from the school campus, we want it to be hopefully filled with a lot of families with students. But it'd also be great to have some grandmas and grandpas peppered in there as well. So, you know, they can take care of them. So, anyway, so that's basically what we have. I would entertain any questions, and if I cannot answer them, that's why we have Bill. So what can I answer for you?
And I was going to say, I know I was at planning commission last night, and it was only as I, if, we're really trying to fill this neighborhood with kids, with families with kids. And I'm looking at the size of the park, and the more I look at it, the more I'm thinking, if we've got a bunch of elementary or lower elementary school kids there, they can't take that trail to another park. The parents are not going to let them unless they come along, and that kind of defeats the purpose of a neighborhood park. And I'm thinking, there's got to be somewhere we can make that park bigger, because right now, it's not big enough for them to have a good playground. And I'd really like to see us go up to the four acres of a real park and maybe even put it somewhere closer to the middle, because I'm also looking, thinking, hmm, going to go all the way down that street, are the parents going to let them go? Or are they going to say, too far, you can only go one block or two blocks down? You know? If, if our intent is to make this friendly for families, and especially families with little kids, I really think we need a bigger park and maybe more centrally located.
Kind of on the same lines, the park being in Phase 4 means it's, you know, years down the road before it gets built. Was there any talk of maybe moving it towards the middle or closer to Phase 1, so it can be there from the beginning?
I guess I would defer that to Bill, only because, I mean, I'm sure that in their office, that there was probably some conversation as they were going through some of the initial layouts.
Parkland can be dedicated anytime. The, the main issue is the grading of it. So the grading wouldn't be accomplished until Phase 4, but you know, it would be usable as a park. You would, just wouldn't probably want to put equipment in it right away, or if you did, you could do it, it would just, you'd just be stockpiling dirt. So there is options to do that, we can talk through with Laura and Neil.
Okay.
You know, I could add a little bit to that. When we talked about parkland with the park board, the park there was also, when you look back and you do a master plan, and I know we don't have one, but so you can, you can take a stab at it and say, okay, up on top of the hill, the Jablonsky land, there's going to be a nice park up on top of the hill. When Mills, and, and you got to look into the future, you got to look at, at what this is going to look like when it's all built out. When the Mills land just to the south of this property comes in, that's where another park could be placed to serve part of this development and part of the Mills, because the Mills property is not as deep, because it runs into the bluffs. So if they put one there on the Mills property, that can also serve the Hardwood property. So you got one here that connects to the trails. The trail will come down through the ravine from Towering Bluffs when that becomes available, and then hook onto a park in the Mills property. Then it will follow into our property and connect to either our park or go up 71st Way to the school. So in, in there's the Mills where the cursor is right now, and see how it is not as deep, but a parkland could be put there, or even over to maybe off the corner of the bluff to serve both properties. And that was, that was what we were talking about when we were at the park board, to spread these parks out, because then if you look on the top of the hill, and Laura, slide it up and over and point where, other way. Jablonsky's is going to be right there on the corner.
Right here?
No.
Where am I? Oh, here.
Up, up. There you go. Right there is where the neck, his parkland dedication that we just talked about will be right there. So, and I believe that was a fairly significant-sized park. And then you go across and come down Towering Bluffs, and you got parkland right in there. So as you walk through, there's four parks that are being established in these developments, and they're fairly spread apart, or decently spread apart. So we can put parkland anywhere you would want it, but if you look at the picture and the future, I think they're, they're spread out nicely, to be honest with you.
If I could, I'll add one more item. And I'm, I'm not sure what meeting this occurred at, but someone had asked the question. I don't, they had asked, they said, two or two and a half acres, what does that mean? They didn't have a good visual on that. So the, the answer was, the size of this park is the equivalent, basically, of two football fields. So if you think of, and I think the answer was, goal line to goal line, not the end zones. But if you took two football fields and put them side by side, that's how big we're talking about. And the discussion with staff was, that's, that's quite large to put in playground equipment, et cetera. That was the, an example that was given.
I think your, your thing is, it's quite a ways away from the first phase, is that what your point is?
Well, I think, and actually, and that, that helps with the visually. But if we're looking at the Mill Street, right to the, or Mill property right to the south, then to me, we should be putting this playground on the south side of this park so that it could be back-to-back with the one that would be developing, and be almost a continuous park between, you know, and that would also get it built quicker. I, I'm with Derek, is, we want these kids to be happy, we want these families, if they move to town, to stay. And I keep thinking, and I know the EDA went through several different layouts, and I can't remember the other ones, but maybe there's some way that we can get it put on the south side of that development, and so that it could flow into a park that was developed on the other side. And I appreciate, older kids can use a path, adults can use a path to get between the various parks. Younger elementary school kids, if their parents go with them, or if an older kid goes with them, they're allowed. But if they're, you know, third graders or second graders, they can't go that far away from home by themselves. So they need something close, unless Derek's going to volunteer to babysit them all.
I don't know.
I guess I would think that for little kids, they're not going to be able to go as far, I would rather have two smaller parks than one really big park. That's, I mean, that's just a thought, because if you have, so now if you have someone, if you have someone on that north side, I mean, just like you're saying, it's far for the guys on the south side. Well, now, but now if you have a park down there and up there, it kind of serves both areas for the smaller kids that that might be.
But that Mill is, we're talking years from now. You know, that, that, if you put this park up on the sou, or on the south side, kind of where those in phase, half in phase, well in phase, can't see quite on there, Phase 2 and 3 area. I, I was just saying that, that makes it central to this development. It could or could not in the future be connected up to one on the Mill property, and that would get built sooner. It could even be built maybe a lot sooner, who knows?
On the flip side, I wouldn't put townhouses that are kind of intended for, if, if the intention is that the townholder, townhomes are former, like empty nesters, I don't know that I would put them back-to-back to the, to the?
To the park.
Park.
Right.
That's just an observation, because once my kids are gone, I don't want to deal with them.
But if you're a grandma, you can just sit there and watch.
That's fair enough.
Couple comments, or Mayor Protem, if I could. So a couple, a couple items there. Regarding the location of the parks, one of the things, you know, the EDA directs people, you know, directs us, what's the most cost-effective? So this is the most cost-effective location by quite a bit. Secondly, it's, it's adjacent to the Stormwater Pond. The other thing is, we're seeing a lot of our townhomes, not only they being by seniors, we're seeing a lot of young families are buying townhomes, so it's not quite so much seniors anymore. Also, as far as park criteria, as far as spacing, I wasn't necessarily thinking we're going to have a park discussion tonight, but I do know that it meets traditional spacing for a neighborhood park. So generally, you have neighborhood parks, you have regional parks, and you have spacing criteria. This does fall within those guidelines. So now whether or not kids are walking to parks or biking to parks, I mean, there's a lot of studies that show they don't anymore, parents actually drive their kids to the park. So, so some, but, but as far as general spacing requirements, this does satisfy that.
Any other discussion?
Everybody keeps asking me about a gas station on that end of town. Is there any room on that end at all for a gas station?
Not on our property.
I didn't think so, but I said I'd ask.
So we have to, oh, sorry, Laura.
Oh, no, yeah, so I, if there's no further discussion, does anyone want to make a motion to adopt resolution 2694 to approve the preliminary plat rezoning, PUD plan for Hardwood Estates' second subdivision?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Derek, second by Groot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I oppose.
Oh, I, I, I approved. So motion passes, four to two. So did that, did you cover two in that? Or do we need to go to two?
Or did you say that's no longer? That was one and two?
That was just one.
Okay. So, number two, the introduction and first reading of Ordinance 395, an ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, to amend the Cannon Falls zoning ordinance by amending a zoning district. So, this, so Ordinance 396 would be our first, do I actually have to read this? Okay. So, this would be the ordinance requesting the rezoning of the parcel from an R2 to an R3 to a medium-density residential and the planned unit development. Yeah. Oh, this is getting there fast enough.
All, all rezoning has to be done by ordinance.
I'm sorry. This is, this is for Timber Ridge. That's not 396.
So, what you're, what you're approving is-
I'm 395, sorry. Yeah, we need 395. Sorry about that. I'm 395. So, zoning classification of, did you find it? I did. Okay. Yeah, so this would be a rezone from an R2 to an R3 medium residential planned unit development for Hardwood Estates' Outlet A. Do I need to read anything else? No? Okay. I have never had anything. So, if it's just a first reading, we don't do anything, right? Yes, right.
Well, we have to board on that.
Okay. So, take a motion to approve Ordinance Number 395, changing the parcel from a R2 to an R3 medium-density district.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi.
I'll second.
Second by Derek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Abstained.
Okay. So, moving to Item C. She abstained. So, it was one, two, three, four, what, one, two? Apparently, I can't count. Five to, five?
Five, zero, one.
Yeah, five, zero, one. Motion carries.
Yes.
All right. Item C, Timber Ridge. Item number one, Resolution 2695, approving preliminary plat rezoning, PUD plans for Timber Ridge.
Good evening. Last night, Planning Commission recommended approval to proceed with the developer's request for a preliminary plat, partial rezone of urban reserve to R3 planned unit development, and a rezone from R3 medium-density residential to an R3 planned unit development. Mark Sontegard is here again today to, thank you, to give an introduction, explain his narrative, and go over any questions that may come up. So, Mark, if you don't mind.
Good evening, council members. Again, my name is Mark Sontegard. I'm with JMH Land Development, and I'm a development consultant for this project. The landowner and developer for this project is Leon Enders with Enders Cannon Falls LLC. And our engineer for this project is Rick Osberg with James R. Hill Engineering. So, that's, I guess that's what I had in this page here. That's our development team. I'll go through a quick review, kind of follows my narrative and also the PowerPoint of the project, and then I'll answer any questions you have afterwards. Or if you have a specific question as I go through it, just let me know. As you're aware, and we worked on this, I believe, the last council members, or at the last council meeting, the Timber Ridge development is made up of two properties. One, the Enders property, which is about 47.6 acres. And then also, we've been working on the purchase agreement of what's left over from the old sandstone development, which is about 14.8 acres. So, the combination of these two properties make up the Timber Ridge development. I'm going to skip ahead two slides and go over what the development has. As we laid out this site, and I've been here a couple times, we had earlier sketch plans that we had a little more density in, but after working with our soils engineers and our engineers and due to the soils types out here, this is the layout that works best for the development, that has the minimal amount of grading and the least risk involved in doing development, which is a big consideration considering what happened with the sandstone development. So, we did, as we've started laying out the site, we started putting together different type of homes for different type of families and individuals. I'll just run down the list. The, what I've labeled A is what's going to be the only thing left over from the original sandstone development. That cul-de-sac has 80-foot lots, and those are going to pretty much stay exactly how they are. And I'll go over street reconstruction a little bit later in my presentation. B is our, our 60-to-65-foot wide lots. They're in yellow. You can see how they work through the neighborhood. We did have one area we wanted to bring in, you know, another type of home for maybe the empty nesters or the single folks or people that just basically don't want to take care of any type of lawn, but still want their own independent walls. So, we have seven villa homes that we plan to build there. D is the 80-to-90-foot single-family lots. Due to the site planning, these lots ended up being rather deep. And most of these lots, we are planning for a private alley to access to rear area. So, these home sites would also have an accessory pad or room for an accessory building. So, with our development, we will be creating the building pad for those. And what I mean, building pad, will be grading it so that a garage or an accessory building can be built. Item E out there, we've got, and I'll go, I got another slide on this, but we've got some land out there all by itself, surrounded by townships. But again, it's part of the Enders property. So, we envision putting two or four estate lots out here. And right now, the only way to serve those areas is by well and septic. I'll touch that a little bit later in my presentation. And then F, back up in the, next to the, the active park, we've got a nice area there, which is a little more in three acres, three and a half acres for a multi-family site, which we are right now shopping around and looking to do in the near future. So, as far as the PUD request, the area is currently zoned R3, and that's the first column you see on this slide. The next column is the, the way the cul-de-sac lots were laid out. That all fits within the R3 zoning. The next column is all the single-family lots, including the 60, 65-foot lots and the 80-to-85-foot lots. All of these also fit within the, the R3 zoning. However, if you go down to the second item from the bottom, your current code has accessory buildings, limited height of 16 feet. We're requesting a larger height for these buildings, for the accessory buildings. Mainly, as we envision these accessory buildings down there along the alley, we're anticipating campers and things like that that may go into these garages. Your standard eight- or 10-foot-high garage door isn't really going to work with that. So, we're anticipating larger garage doors. Therefore, the ceiling and the roof needs to go up a little bit higher on your, your building. Now, your city code measures, the building height is the average height of your roof halfway up. So, we're not talking 20 feet to the peak of the roof. It's 20 feet to halfway up. If that makes sense. But we feel that 20, the change from 16 to 20 would allow homeowners to have a little bit taller garage door as you move in. The last column there on the right is the villa lots. We have a plan that we've been looking at and working with a builder on that's 35 feet wide. So, therefore, we're looking at a 45-foot-wide lot for these villa homes. So, there's really where a big part of the PUD is. We're looking at a smaller lot there, smaller width. Also, as you go down the line item, you know, side yard setbacks are five feet rather than 10 and 5. And we're also, and there is an error. It's written correctly in the staff report and my narrative, but that bottom, you know, minimum garage area, we're looking for 400 square, square feet rather than 440. Again, with the villa homes, the HOA will take care of your lawns and your, your plowing of your driveway. So, you know, basically, a 400-square-foot garage, usually the 440 is, gives you a little bit more room for your snowblower and lawnmower and stuff like that. But these folks won't need that. So, this slide is, again, showing this, the little, we'll call it, you know, I hate to call it the, well, it's a little extra piece of property down below the bluff that the Enders owns. It came with the property when it was purchased. It is rather large, great elevation from the other area. So, it's difficult to get sewer service to this area. Also, the, you know, working with the city, where sewer would come from, and where you see the number 19, it would come just to the west of that. And that's where the sewer would need to come through. And then plus, it would have to go under and over, over and, or under and through a ravine to get there. So, it is a kind of a difficult trek for sewers, regular city sewer. Plus, you're, we're surrounded by, or this area is surrounded by township. So, we will be making a request for a variance for this area to be served, or these homes to be served with well and septic. It's my understanding, staff is working on a amendment to the code to allow for a request of a variance. So, with this, with this preliminary plat, with our first plat, these will be two outlots, and they will be set aside until such time as we can discuss the septic and well service at a later time. But with the plat, you'll see the first plat, this will be an outlot. We also have a couple of other interesting parts of this development. The yellow area, as we're doing our site planning, for instance, Lot 36 and 37, we ended up being super deep. And if you stood there, you'd say, well, this, this lot's plenty deep, but this, the, what I have in J, boy, that would make more sense for that land to be owned by the loan, the owner of Lot 10, and same thing, nine. And actually, number six was at the Planning Commission last night, and he came up to me and said, "Yeah, count me in. I'd like to own a little bit more property." So, the thought here, we're showing some outlots, and as we plat these in the future, we will be discussing, or the sale of some of these outlots to the neighbors, to the, to the west and north. Lot lines may move around a little bit, depending on who wants stuff. Down there, K and J are, are basically, they're, they're, we have a request for those to be purchased. And again, J, or G just happened last night. So, again, we're trying to make better use of the property. And if you were to go out there and look at the homes on seven and six, you'll see their rear yards, their rear yards are about 30, 40 feet. So, they don't have much of a backyard at all. And then the, the three lots in green, again, we've got additional land that we're looking to do stuff with. 68th Avenue is a private drive. Current homeowners on that drive are using it via a, a private easement. We are working with city staff and the city engineer on the best way to feed these for sewer and water and also fire protection. So, that is part of the engineer's memo, and we will be working with him, and we'll have solutions for that moving forward. So, you know, we will put together a homeowner association for the single-family lots shown here. We'll have a master association, basically, some initial rules and regulations, some architectural controls. And then we have this private alley that we plan on putting in place that'll need to be maintained. And then, as I mentioned, with the villa homes, we are anticipating one builder to come in and build all those villa homes. We'll have a sub-HOA association there, and they'll mainly be in charge of the outdoor maintenance. Each homeowner would still have to maintain their home, but this association would take care of snow plowing and lawn care. And then, as we discussed and with the Park Commission the other night, we've got a public, two parks. I think that's on my next slide. Yeah. So, we have an active park up here, about 2.84 acres, and planned next to the future apartment area and in the west side of the old townhome area. It seems to be a nice flat area to build a active park. And then we've got this wooded area with some slopes, but we can, we've walked through there a couple times, and we can basically put, put in a wooded trail system through there for public use. And one of the items we do need to work out is, you know, down these private alleys, we'll need to put, you know, have to have a trail and public access easement for those access points. Also, we need public access to get down to that pond that we're planning there. The old standstone streets, we've been working with the engineering on this. This slide kind of shows what's out there. Everything in red is planned just to be completely ripped up and not built. That's how it works with our development. Everything in blue plans to be ripped up and rebuilt. So, basically, that means the storm sewers are going to need to be tweaked. The asphalt will come out, the class five will come out. We're working right now with city engineer on how far down we should go with the soils, and then we'll build it back up. So, basically, the cul-de-sac and stuff, this is kind of the first phase of our development. It's tear that out and try and get that street rebuilt again this year. And you can see that in our first phase. We're anticipating platting our first phase, and we'll get as much of that done as we can this year. But I would anticipate some of it would have to be wrapped up next spring. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, just to be clear, there's, there's going to be a master HOA covering the whole property?
The master HOA would cover, the master HOA would not cover the apartments. That would be a standalone when that comes through. And the master association would not work with those estate lots. Those estate lots would be standalone homes. But the master association would cover all the new single-family homes. And again, we've put together minimum rules and regulations and then some architectural requirements.
But I know, I know we discussed it last night too, but the streets that you are rebuilding are city streets.
Yeah. All the streets that we're rebuilding are city streets. The only private road would be that alley.
Right.
We're not looking for the city to maintain that.
Any other questions or discussions?
I'm going to move to adopt Resolution 2695 for the preliminary plat, rezoning PUD plans for Timber Ridge.
Second. Okay. A motion made by Gesmi and a second by Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then number two, introduction and first reading of the ordinance 396, an ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, to amend the Cannon Falls zoning ordinance by amending its zoning district. So this is the same as before. We just needed a motion and a second.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Jepson.
I'll second.
Second by Groot. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item D, discussion or subject is Cannon Falls Fair Board, I believe, titling or titles? Diane?
Yeah, the agreement states that we are to provide a copy of the recorded deeds to the fair association, and I would like a copy of those deeds to be sent to the fair association as we agreed to. Okay, that's all I needed on that one.
Okay.
The ones that we get are the ones that we convey. They should be in possession of the ones that they convey, because they are the, how do I put it? They gave us the Hannah's Bend Park, so they should get the recorded document, and if they haven't, they need to talk to them. We received the vacated street ones and that little sliver that is inside, and that was sent to them last week.
Thank you.
Okay, and item C regarding the Cannon Falls donations for 2022 and 2023.
Yeah, and I know the fair board donated the land, Hannah's Bend land, to the city, which I think was very nice of them being, you know, we've just spent $30,000-plus on 1.14 acres of land over by the Cannon Street and Riverside Terrace for 1.88 acres, we paid $50,000. So for them to have donated that land of Hannah's Bend, which they rightfully owned, I think was more than generous on the part of the fair board. And so because it's now finished, and we used, as far as I know, the original agreements that were approved by the council back in October, because I certainly didn't see any additional documents come to us, I would like to move that we fulfill our obligation and send the check for $15,000 for the 2022, 2023 fair board association donations.
Aren't we discussing donations at the next work session?
But these were already approved.
These are already in the budget, right?
Yep. These we, sorry. No, these were previously approved in previous budgets. They just haven't been paid out.
Oh, sure.
So are you making a motion?
Yeah, I will make that motion that we catch up with our donations to them.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Diane is making a motion to ensure that the donation approvals for the Cannon Falls Fair Board for 2022 and 2023 are paid. And Groot, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, reports. Maggie is not here for the Chamber of Commerce. EDA? Is that Laura?
I guess we've just really been working hard on the hardwood estates part, so I guess you've seen what I've been working on. So I don't really have much else to report, so that's all I have.
Just a, I was, I should have, I was going to ask before, and this is probably in duh for me, but, so what Sandstone Ridge is really kind of no more timber, I wanted to say Timber Lodge.
Timber Ridge, isn't it?
Timber Ridge is the new word, so we're not going to say Sandstone Ridge anymore.
Correct.
Timber Ridge, got it.
Yep, correct.
All right, Public Works, Derek.
Yeah, we met Monday, because you and I were gone Thursday. We recommended the hiring of the maintenance operator to the digester decamp valves, and we talked about garbage trucks being in alleys, which we're still kind of dealing with, I guess, right now, but hopefully we can get it taken care of, and that was it.
And the other one was the approval of the maintenance worker. Did you say that already?
Yeah, yep.
Yep, sorry. All right, and Finance Committee?
Yep, we met last night. We approved the tennis court agreement with the school district and had a few discussions about our ambulance department, employees, and possible funding. And that was about it.
Lisa, Library Board?
I was there. Went over the budget again, which they're meeting about tomorrow with you, I believe, Neil. Me?
Are you on?
I'm on. Nicole also got approval for, she got two grants, one's $4,000 for a technology update, and the other one was $2,500 to put toward handicap, handy, handicapable is all I can say right now, handicap doors to open, to do the outside and the inside doors, so, which is going to be about $8,000, so she's going to work on more grants to be able to do that. Yep, that's about it.
Okay. And Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, we met last night, and we discussed hardwood estates, the PUD for that, changing, approving the preliminary plat, and also the same thing for Timber Ridge. And we both, that commission recommended that passing to the city council, which we approved tonight. That's all we discussed.
Okay, anyone else? We'll go around the room. Mr. McCormick, Chief McCormick?
You never start with me. So I have no time to say. That's okay. So most of our summer things have wrapped up, hard to believe, but in three weeks, we'll be first day of school. Just want to remind people that, you know, as we transition back to school, you know, there will be kids that are gathering for buses and walking and biking and that type of stuff, just to be cautious, especially around morning times when the kids are going to school and afternoon times when kids are getting out on our side streets and some of our main thoroughfares. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sarah, I know you have a lot, you have a big list.
I have a whole postal note. I had to write it down, otherwise I would have forgotten. So in July, I met with the Finance Committee regarding the elections and absentee voting, and basically, I was looking for direction and how we should proceed to, the county was asking us if we want to keep the absentee voting here or not, basically, because a lot of the laws have changed. And so the Finance Committee said, yes, we would like to keep having that service here. I just received an email from the county, they are not going to allow us to have absentee voting here anymore. So we, and simply because it wasn't, it was a hard decision, but really, it comes down to a lot of extra expenses. It would put a lot of stress on the staff here. We'd always have to maintain party balance, so that would affect vacations and time off and stuff like that. So there's a lot of things that play into it, but the county's biggest reason why they decided to keep it all and handle everything is because there would be no way to tell if somebody came to vote in Cannon Falls, if they would vote in Red Wing. There's no communication back and forth like that for absentee time. So this will cut out all of that, and everybody just has to go to the county. So unfortunately, we don't get to keep it, but we will, however, do everything we can to assist the citizens of the city of Cannon Falls, whether if they have questions, need help, we will help them, you know, get their application to the county and then get it mailed to them, to their home. We will just guide them as best as we can. We'll update our website, we'll do everything we can to help with that, make it easier.
And so just to clarify, because I know this was a big confusion last year, year before, was it last year? In-person, early voting is really absentee voting.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think that was a very confusing thing for a lot of people, because really, you were just coming here, and the staff member here was being your visual, not notary, but witness.
Correct.
Right? And then you guys were just, well, then they were packaging it up, you were putting it in a pile and shipping it to Good Hugh.
Yes, yeah, we'd get it over to Good Hugh County.
So they're saying you can't do that here.
Correct.
But you can still do it in Good Hugh County.
Correct, you can drive to Red Wing and do it, or you can do it by mail. If you're going to be, and honestly, it is, if you're going to be out of town for the elections, yes, absentee voting is wonderful, but with all the new technology, it really, and in our two wards, it really takes a couple of minutes to vote. It's so much more work to absentee vote than it is to come the day of the election. So I strongly encourage it, if you can, encourage others just to come the day of the election. It's much easier on everybody.
Back in the day, you'd wait for an hour, and that's not the case anymore.
It's not the case anymore.
Okay.
But it's a marvelous time to visit.
Well, we have to be careful on visiting during the elections, so, yeah.
Once you're done voting.
Yeah, just as long as you're outside, just go outside.
And all the first time I went through was a breeze, the second time.
Now, now, no. And then I just wanted to remind you guys of the work session next week on the 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Do I know that? Don't laugh, okay. August 22nd? At what time? Okay, I got it.
Then we have a trail meeting.
Oh, that's right. Okay, I remember, I did approve that. Neil?
You know, I usually don't react to certain things in public input, but you know, my name got tossed around quite a bit tonight. And I do think that some of it was, I know three council members were in every meeting that I was in, and I don't think that it went that way. Do I alter minutes? No, I don't. Alan takes some minutes, and I think a couple of the council members that I did talk to, that statement was made. And, but I want to give you just some tidbits on what you guys pay for and what the township fire people paid for, and these are just facts. And when you, when you try to make a fair and equitable contract, you want it fair for your citizens, right? So, and I'm going to use Cannon Falls Township because we cover them in entirety. So the reason I know this is because we've been doing some election stuff here lately, and we got a spreadsheet sent out to us. Wannamango, the city of Wannamango is a fairly decent little city, right? We cover all of Cannon Falls Township. For 2022, it was $35,000. Do you know there's more registered voters in Cannon Falls Township than there is in the city of Wannamango? There's, no, there's more Cannon Falls residents registered to vote than the city of Wannamango registered voters. So we're covering a larger voting population in Cannon Falls Township for $35,000. Just keep that, think about that. Stanton Township, same thing. I don't think we cover the whole township, but the majority of the population, where is it? Right buttoned up next to the city. So just something to think about when you work on your next contract. And I don't think what he was saying is quite accurate, because I wasn't in any other meetings than you guys, and you know how they went. But is it wrong to negotiate a contract our way or their way? Which one's wrong? Right? He's saying that we were wrong. Well, maybe we were doing it our way. And I've done a lot of these, I've been in a lot of negotiations, but sometimes, you know, you just can't take it, take the punch in the nose without saying something, and I think this is one of them times, that I needed to say something, that it wasn't quite exact. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Well-stated, Neil.
Thank you. Laura, you already, I went from Laura over here. Zach, why didn't you say something?
It's all right.
Okay, so Zach, you got anything?
I don't think I have any further comments at this time.
Real quickly, 2023 street project is, which is the lift station in the directional drug on the river, is set to start, sorry, Tuesday after Labor Day. And then the pool paving project, we don't have a timeframe on that, other than they couldn't start till the pool was closed, which it did last week. So those are the two Public Works projects that I'm involved with.
The only thing I have is they've started work on John Birch Park, started, they're starting to move power first and then start tearing things down and rebuilding the dugout. So that's all I got.
Awesome. Derek?
Nothing.
Diane?
I just have a question for Public Works. When you get off, it's at 4th Street, Old 52, down by the Cannonball, Cannonball Apartments, when you're going to McDonald's, right off the highway into, to get to McDonald's, there's tremendous potholes there.
That's county.
That's the dry, it's not the highway, it's the access road to McDonald's.
On ours.
Couldn't we fill it anyway?
The one by Subway?
No, no, not that one. You go up on, south of the apartment where, and I technically, you know, I don't know if I can't remember if the original plat was, that parking area belongs to the apartment building or what, but everybody's using it as the access to get to McDonald's, and right when you come off the highway onto that, there's a.
That's county to private, I think. And are you talking about coming off of County Road 20? Yeah, 24. Or 24, that would be 20.
Yeah.
That would be 20 there.
Yeah, it's 20, the Old 52, 4th Street, it's.
Ground by Triangle.
When they put in the overpass, that became highway, County Highway 20. And the access there, after you get outside the right of way, is all private.
So then we would need to talk to the apartment owners to fix that?
I'm guessing they must have plans for how they're going to do that, I don't know, but.
Yeah, but I mean, it really is a nasty entrance right now, and it is just going to get progressively worse.
If I could, Diane, that's all private, and they have a plan to repave that, but they're not going to, they're not planning to repave it until the end of the project.
But they're not planning to even fix the potholes right now?
That we don't know, that we haven't communicated with them, but it is private, so we would not have the authority to fix them ourselves.
Is there somebody could ask them?
You could.
Well, we can mention it to them, but we got to be a little careful, though, suggesting improvements on private property, that's my only hesitation.
Well, if somebody can give me their name, I'll call them up and talk to them.
Oh, boy.
Well, no, as a private citizen who doesn't want to ruin the underside of my car, it's not a big deal, but it is irritating.
Yeah, it's always, it's always, it's always a fine line for either staff or elected officials to recommend to someone private property, do a private property improvement.
I was just going to ask them if they were planning to repair it, not recommend.
Well, they are, they are, they're going to repave the whole thing, and the plan is to do it this fall, we don't, we just don't have a timeframe yet.
DoorDash.
Mr. Gesmi?
Nothing.
Mr. Jepson?
Nope.
Ms. Groot?
I'm good.
Well, I'm good as well, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Well, I'm good as well, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion?
Aye. Did you get that? A motion by Gesmi and a second by Lisa, and all in favor?
I just signed.